Let's call this meeting of the King William County Planning Commission to order. Good call, please.
Here.
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 Yep.
Here. Next time, may I have a review and adoption of the meeting agenda? Does anybody have any questions, suggestions, additions? Motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded, third, and fourth. Can I get a roll call, please, Ms. Bar?
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. Next time, may I have this approval of meeting minutes, April fourth, twenty twenty-three? Does everybody have a chance to look over them and make sure they're correct? Or is it something they need to be changed?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our April fourth regular meeting.
Second.
Yeah. Motion made, probably seconded, to approve the minutes, Ms. Bar.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. All right. Next time, we have the agenda is citizens' comment period, one minute, one opportunity of three minutes per individual on non-public hearing matters. And it looks like we do not have a public hearing, so it's all open. So, to open citizens' comment period, if anyone's wishing to come up, please state your name and your address. Does anyone have a line? Anyone send that? Okay. Maybe it put me. All right, looks like we haven't gotten into it yet.
That's true, too.
I'm sure you jinxed it. You know, seeing no one, I will close citizens' comment period. Next time, we have on the agenda is unfinished business. Ms. Graham, do you have anything to bring up?
Uh, not for unfinished, I put what we had talked about under the work session matters.
Does anyone on the board have any unfinished business they wish to discuss? All right, then we'll move into new business of this brand.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that we received two applications. This is for Kennington, for rezoning from B two to R one, and for conditional use permit for thirty-one age restricted units. So, that may be coming to your next month's meeting, to your G meeting.
Does anyone else have any new business?
Yeah, I just have a question. So zoning something from B two to R one.
And it's not the full parcel, it's a portion of a parcel that is owned B two. Um, then they want to take a portion of that and rezone it to R one and then file for a C U P for these units.
Would that be considered a down zoning?
Um, probably, yeah.
Okay.
They want to keep an area along the front for business.
Yes. Next time, we have a staff and or special committee reports. It looks like we have the hiss and reports which we received today.
We were able to close out the reports with the month ending over the weekend, so you have all of the normal reports that detail the zoning reports, how many land disturbance permits, and how many planning items that we reviewed for the month, along with the details of the zoning permits, the land disturbance permits, also the property maintenance report, that's in detail, that shows all of the items. And I do want to thank Barbara and Sherry. I was actually out for a week at some flood management training, and then I was out for a couple of days for some family items, my significant other had some surgery, so they were tremendous help while I was out of the office for training and for that. So I want to thank them because they picked up the permits during that time.
Thank you.
Do you even have any questions on it, or have a chance to look at them yet?
I did have one question. I see this five thirty-one brandy wine keeps showing up on here. I guess there's a old barn built in the front yard. What's, what's going on with that and what's the remedy?
So it's something Andy's been, and we've been weighing options with the property owner, so he's actually going to be appealing to the border zoning appeals. So we were waiting to see if the changes to the ordinance were going to help him. They did not. Gave him a, some timeframe to determine what he was going to do, so now he's going to appeal to the board zoning appeals. Don't know if that's, I mean, it'll be up to the board at that point to determine if they're going to grant him a variance or not. It's a structure that's already built.
Do we know, was there a permit obtained to build it?
There was a land disturbance permit that was obtained. There was not a zoning permit.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Next, what's you? It's like the meeting might not really pass, so I don't want to commission your comments. I don't know.
Mr. Cameron, can you make a suggestion that we move that to after we get through our work session matters?
It sounds good. I have, probably just, no, we don't need to vote on those. Are you okay with that? Okay, want to move that to the end, number twelve, I guess, if it's number twelve. So, let's go on to, well, do we need to adjourn our regular meeting or just continue on into?
Just continue on to a session.
All right, we'll continue on into our work session matters, ten A discussion of entrances and driveways. If I can be using this gram, or I mean, yeah, or will it be?
So, what I have done, just to kind of give an overview, and I put that in front of y'all tonight, just some of the things that had gone and been approved by the board of supervisors. Just to kind of refresh what we've done, the special events, the temporary stands, the minimum lot size and setbacks, not applying to public utility parcels in Botha County, and modifications for the accessory structures and lots in the RPA. And then we made some changes to the table where water towers were permitted by right in all districts. And then the accessory dwelling, that was also approved, where they could apply for C U P if they're over eight hundred square feet, panels being located behind the primary residence, except subdivisions, that's twenty-five acres or more. We changed that to, if they have to abut either a primary or secondary highway, and they would be able to do another division if it was for family or on parcels over fifty acres or more. And then under the cluster, we changed it from thirty thousand to forty thousand if no public water sewer is available for each parcel. And then under driveways, we required that they have a concrete apron that meets the standards, and then the rest of the driveways would have to be concrete or asphalt, and that's in your major subdivision, not in your, your smaller subdivisions. So going in the overview, what we were going to look at was the minor subdivisions and the matrix, changing the matrix to add short-term business rentals requiring a T U P in the A C, review of the noise ordinance, and changes to the P U D. A couple of things, and going back over our notes, we approved the special events definitions, but we need to put that in the matrix because there's nowhere in the matrix that really identifies that. Another thing that we have talked about was clarifying the wording for measurements from the central line of three sixty and thirty. So, I did a little research and I came up with something, we'll review that, let's see if that looks like something you would want to do. And also, we still haven't finalized for the building exteriors and the T P O, we really still need to do something with that. And we need to talk about the buffers a little bit more. And then, of course, definitions for industry, heavy, medium, and light, and where to fit these different industrial uses, we need to look at that as well. And that's not something we're probably going to be denied if we get through everything else, but something we do need to address. Something else that has come up is the daycare centers in churches. And currently, daycare centers are only permitted in V one and V two districts. And that's going to pivot most churches from having childcare daycare centers as their secondary use. And of course, daycare centers is a big need for it, and a lot of your churches normally do this as a secondary use. Religious facilities, they're permitted by right in all districts except for B two and I, which were, then they were be permitted in the B two and I with a C U P approval. Religious assemblies, they, they do not allow the daycare center. So we're thinking if we could look into that, and this, of course, is up to the, to the planning commission to include churches to allow them to do daycare centers with approval of a C U P. If that is something that y'all would like to consider.
I have a question on that. So if, if a church has a daycare and the daycare is kind of a secondary use, is that treated as a business and how is that taxed?
I'm not sure how it's taxed. We did talk about that briefly this afternoon. I would think it would be taxed, but I would have to check with the commissioner of revenue because it is secondary to the religious, the religious use, which is not, you know, it's taxed exempt. But of course, a daycare center does make money.
Right, and I could just, I mean, I could just, I think we need to have that spelled out in there because if not, we're going to end up with all daycare facilities located on church grounds if they're not taxed like they would be off of church grounds.
We can certainly check on that, and I'll get with Karina and see what we did do with that. We, we have a couple of churches that have them, and they've had them for years. So, I would consider them as being grandfathered in, but this is something that has come up. It is something that a lot of your churches normally do.
How many daycare centers do we have in the county?
We have one daycare center in the Commerce Park that I'm aware of. We have one just on the King and Queen side. And I know one church, I'm sure there's more, but I know one church that has part-time daycare. I don't think it's a full-time facility.
Do you know, any of those have? My, what if they? Not the permit, but the I guess, business license to, to pay taxes. I guess the ones, except even the one with the church that you know.
Would have to check on that, yeah. Churches are exempt from the licensing to social services. They're not exempt from the same requirements that they have to follow, but they are exempt from social service licensing.
And another, I mean, and again, I'm all for churches doing whatever they need to do, but if, if these churches, if more and more get into opening up daycares at the churches, run as a secondary use, will we run into any V dot issues with the traffic coming and going?
Normally, that is not an issue because it's not held on Sunday when you're having church in Sunday school. And the occupant load for the daycare is usually not nearly what that would be for church.
But if your recommendation is to do this with approval of a C U P, that's something that we could definitely take into consideration as far as the conditions are for a conditional use permit.
There is, and if, if they get to that point, you know, they're going to have to give us support for them. With the age groups, the missing's going to have to go through building and going to have to go through fire. And then, of course, you know, it'll need an annual inspection to make sure that everything remains safe. And one of our requirements is currently in the ordinance now is they have to have a designated arrival and departure zone, so they're not, the kids aren't running through the parking lot, through the traffic and so forth. So we already have that included in our work then for the daycare.
Mr. Chairman, it's on the, Ms. Graham, under exempt subdivisions, we say any further subdivision of a previously exempted lot or so, this exemption shall constitute a major subdivision. What does that mean?
Well, we did make a change to that already. Where we allow them to do, unless it's a family division, or if it's lots greater than fifty acres, then they're able to divide into two twenty-five acre some parcels.
Okay, if they're able to divide, if they have a twenty-five acre lot, they're able to divide that lot.
If they have a fifty acre lot, they can divide it one time into two twenty-five acre exempts, or if they've owned it long enough, they can do a family division.
If somebody came in and wanted to do a five acre lot.
They would not be able to take a twenty-five acre exempt parcel and just do a single lot or a minor division.
So, I actually had questions on that as well. On the twenty-five acre exempt, no further division unless it went to rezoning and went something major, but it could be family divided.
It is, it is allowed to have a family division, which, you know, we changed the ordinance to three acres, but they have to own it for five years before they can do a family division.
Now, now, I'm bringing this full circle to the family division because I'm unclear. We're allowing three acre family. Does that mean if somebody has a six acre parcel, they can cut it in half?
They have to still maintain their five acres, but if they want to go, you know, several three acre parcels to all their children, even when we did the ordinance change, we included niece or nephew because it had come up in the past where some people didn't have children, but they had each of the nephews.
But the parent track has to remain five acres, okay? And on the twenty-five acre exempt lot, is that still, is it twenty-five or fifty foot of road frontage and then a five hundred foot stem?
Because the way they read it, I don't have that in front of me. It just says it has to abut an existing primary or a secondary highway.
It doesn't have like twenty-five or fifty feet or?
Well, when you get to that, then you're doing a division.
You don't, you don't allow any stem lots anymore.
So, if you do, yeah, we don't allow black lots or anything, but if you were to do a family division where it's twenty foot right of way to go to the family division, you're, you're going to want it off the main road and then break your three acres off.
I'm going back to the twenty-five acre exempt lots. How much road frontage do they have to have?
Depending on where they're at, four hundred feet. I mean, even if they're on the lane, they might have their frontage at four hundred feet.
So, a twenty, and again, because I, I read it, and it doesn't really, it's kind of misleading a little bit. So if you do, it used to be a twenty-five acre exempt lot could be on a twenty-five foot stem, and it could be five hundred foot before the lot opened up. Now, the twenty-five acre lot has to have three hundred foot of frontage on the state road or on a right of way?
It could be on the right of way.
Okay.
Is, is that right?
So if.
And what you're saying, that every lot must, must abut as primary or secondary highway?
Yeah, but if you're going to do that, well, I was thinking if they were doing the fifty acres, then it does call in a little bit differently. So, if you're going to take it and break it into two parcels, then you don't want to have two, you know, entrances right on to thirty or three sixty, since we do allow them on the primary roads. When we did the ordinance change, we've allowed minors, single lots. The only, the only thing we didn't allow was an exempt subdivision, which we allowed before, so that's why we put it back and to allow them on the primary roads. Because if any, if any lot's going to be permitted in a primary, I would think the twenty-five acre, yeah, because it's a much larger parcel. So we did include that, and that was approved. But we do want to limit how many entrances we have, so if they're going to break it into two, then I would think we should allow them to have one entrance for both.
So, so if someone wanted, had a hundred acres and wanted to do four twenty-five acre lots, the lot fronting out on the primary or secondary road has to have three hundred foot of frontage, but the interior lots can have
Three hundred feet.
feet of frontage on these fifty, is it twenty-five or fifty foot right of way?
Uh, for example, fifty. It's not very clear on here, and that might be something we need to clarify when we bring the next one. I can change the wording a little bit to make sure it's included.
Yeah, I just, I read it, and I just, it was kind of gray area for me, so before somebody comes in, so it can have three hundred foot of frontage on primary or secondary because it's big lots, and then the rest of the ones stacked behind it.
I would think we would want them on a lane if possible.
Agreed.
I mean, we're trying to limit our access onto the main road.
The problem I would have with that is if you've got shared entrances, they are a major problem. And I think we should do everything we can to stay away from having shared entrances. I can speak to that first.
So, if we have a, if say, we have a hundred acres and he's doing four twenty-five acre exempt parcels, it would be better to have one lane for the four parcels versus four entrances off of thirty or three sixty.
Yep. You're still, you're still going to get into a problem with that. And that goes without question, but it does present a lot of problems when you have a shared entrance and trying to get cooperation between the majors.
And that was one thing that we did address at the last meeting. So I did do the wording to include an agreement, and that's something else that we can make sure we include if we do that. I'll be glad to, we can go over that if you'd like.
Donna, are you saying that you would prefer to have four entrances from the?
In, in large parcels, in large parcels like that.
I guess, where would you draw the line at?
In other words, when, when you got a large parcel, like you got, like Mr. President said, you got a hundred acres, and you wanted to divide that hundred acres into four twenty-five acre lots, then if they're stacked, it presents a problem. So, if, if you've got five hundred foot frontage and four, five hundred foot wide lots, then obviously, then the only way you can access that is through, through a single entrance. But I think, I do think we need to look, take a good hard look at that.
So, under the, the minor that we talked about,
Yes.
and everybody was in agreement at the last meeting, this is the wording that I added. There should be only one access to an adjacent primary highway. There should be only one access to a secondary highway or a shared driveway for every two lots that front a secondary highway. A shared access shall be provided on a fifty foot wide easement extending from the existing public road to cover all lots within the subdivision. There shall be a road maintenance agreement for each slot in the subdivision.
That's, if you have one, and if you have an internal road system.
If you have a.
If you have two, two, two double entrances.
That's for shared access or a private road.
Okay.
But on the exempts, you couldn't have really dual share. You're saying they all have to be running on the fifty foot right of way?
I know in the past, we've allowed them to do more than one down a lane. So the way that it's reading is a little, it's not very clear, so I think we probably should clear it up. But something similar to what we put in the minor, I think, would work.
I, I, I like the, what you just said, the one entrance with them stacked on the one entrance. And the reason I like that is because if you get past two, then V dot's going to require you to pave the entrance.
Oh, the entrance itself, if it's, if it's more than two lots, they're going to require, I don't think they're going to require, they're going to require a larger, wider entrance.
And I think if it's three or more, they do require just the entrance be paved now.
Which is more than two.
Just the, just the entrance, not the whole road, just the entrance.
They make you pave fifty foot in, and you have to basically be fifty foot wide, and you have to have your radiuses so two cars can come and go. And to me, particularly on thirty or three sixty, and we're kind of, we'll reverse up here, but instead of having the four entrances, you know, you have one paved entrance.
So we do have some V dot experts up here.
Yeah, my, my concern is not so much paving entrance, my concern is just, oh.
But.
Maintenance of the entrance.
If you're on thirty or three sixty, don't they like to see a distance between driveways anyway? They don't like to have them close together.
Yeah, I, I think the fewer entrances you have, anyway, we can minimize the number of entrances.
Yeah.
Onto a, certainly onto a primary highway.
Yeah.
But even on secondary highways, we should try to minimize the number of entrances.
Which is what we did in the miners, so we could kind of take the wording from the miner.
Remember when that sounded kind of cool and interesting? Well, now it's time for the next switch, by ditching your big carrier. Your same phone, same number, same cell network, and lightning fast coverage. Those useless bundles and those celebrity apps. Will help you save up to six hundred dollars a year. You cut the cord, now cut the cable.
Yeah, I think the wording for the miner applies to, you know, to the exempt as well, in my opinion. I'd rather see, I'd rather see wording like this than I would, honestly, you know, if we were to assume four lots along a, a primary road, for example. Well, it's, if we look at, what, twelve hundred feet, three hundred foot minimum, right, frontage? So you're looking at twelve hundred feet, you can have four driveways, so that may, we're trying to.
Entirely, you know, too many, especially on a, on a main road or a busy secondary road.
So we do like we did with the miners and cut it in half and have shared driveways between every two lots? That would put your driveway six hundred feet forward.
Is there any limit on the number of lots and exempt subdivisions, as long as it's over?
They have to have twenty-five acres per parcel, but now.
But they could have ten, ten.
If they have the acreage, they can.
Yeah. So then you get into a lot more issues, if you were to go just single.
But you are talking twenty-five acres, so they're, they're much larger. And, and it's not something that you're going to see often at all. I mean, we see two, sometimes three, but I think that's been the most I've ever seen up there.
Nine or seven.
And of course, back in the day, seven lots were approved for miners. And of course, back in the day, seven lots were approved for minors. I mean, and of course, yeah, I know yours are, are larger lots, but even back in the day, we allowed seven lots for minors.
Yeah.
So moving forward, um, talking about the central line of the highway, um, I included uh, that in your package that you have sent before you. Uh, means a line equidistant from the edges of the median separating the main traveled ways of a hi- divided highway are the central line of the main traveled way of a non-divided highway. So that kinda covers three sixty because there's a median. So it would be from the edge of each median um, inwards or it covers the thirty, which is not separated by median.
What was the, what was the purpose of that?
Because it wasn't very clear where to get your seven fifty and your five hundred measurements. So.
Because the variable width right of ways, because the right of ways vary.
Yeah.
So if we chose the center line of thirty or the center of the four lanes, is that correct?
It's from the, uh, the way that we're reading it, it's from the edge of the median separating the main traveled way of a divided highway.
The edge of the median.
I'm not following that.
Yeah.
So you would go all the way across the road to the edge of where the median starts and get your measurement seven hundred and fifty feet inward from that.
So in three sixty, that would be?
The three sixty is a hundred and eighty foot right of way and you had a twenty foot median. Then the distance would be measured from the edge of the median or seven hundred feet back, so it would be ninety, minus ten eighty feet with the, from the edge of the median to the right of the line. And then the total seven hundred fifty feet back, rather than from the right of way. Which, as you said, varies, but.
It does. Um, it's just the way that our coordinate spread, it wasn't clear to some people. So we were trying to come up with some wording that was a little more clear. Um, if you don't think this is gonna work, we will certainly kinda readdress it, um.
As, as long as it's clear, as long as the language is clear, I don't think it makes a lot of difference.
Does this work for everyone?
Is there a reason that it doesn't say the center of the median itself?
Um, just doing some reviewing and looking at some of the VDOT standards and so forth, we, we took some of the wording from that. But we can certainly say from the central line of the median, that'll give them more footage.
Well, that'd give less footage if you went from the central line of the median, give them less footage from the right of way line.
So you would do means from the center line of the median separating the main travel way? You wanna do that, then?
I wasn't recommending that we change it, I was just curious as to why we didn't go with the very center of the median versus the median, the median width can change based on turn lanes and so forth, so that's, you know, that can be a variable too.
We can, we can change it that way if you want. Um, a median with those.
I, I, I personally think the way you've got it is clearer than what we've had before, because there was always some question where we had it before.
You think it works best like that, then I think that's the
We just wanna make it clear for anyone that would be reading the word then, you know, where to get their, their measurement from.
Like you said, you got this from VDOT's, so that's what they use, that's.
And the, the only question I still have is, which, if there's a, say, a turn lane in the, in the median goes obviously further in, what do we require, where do we require the measurement of the, the, the closest?
That's a good point. That's a good point, because it does make it vary a lot.
Still the middle of the median, because even though the turn lane is there, the median is shrunk, so let's just say the median shrunk down fifteen feet.
Yeah, if you do, if you do it from the center of the median, then.
Cause it says equal distance, so even though it's narrow, there might be five lanes on this side, four lanes on this side, cause it's got the turn lane.
I would rather get, get more, more usable property to the, to the landowner, uh, so if we were to say the
If you're looking for, for more usable property for the landowner, or more, more usable space in the seven hundred fifty foot setback, it's best to go from the right of way line. Otherwise, if you go from the, if you went from the center of the median on three sixty, you'd have to cut off at least ninety feet. So instead of seven hundred fifty, you'd have six hundred and sixty.
The, the one thing that wouldn't change would be the, the center of the two lanes on your side of the property.
Well, it's not, thirty is pretty clear.
Thirty is the center of thirty, because it's two lanes, but on three sixty, if you're on the west side of three sixty, go from the center of the two lanes on your side, seven hundred fifty.
That's gonna put you a lot further back doing it that way.
Yeah, and that's, that's the question, which way do we want it more or less?
That's gonna put the TCO a lot further back?
Cause it's seven fifty from the center of the road, so if you're only taking half the road versus the full width of the road, uh, that's gonna put you, you know, it's gonna move that seven hundred fifty back further on the property.
So the way it's in there now, or the way your interpretation, it's the center of the four lanes?
It's not very clear, the way this is reading, it would be from the edge of the median on that side of the road and, and then go toward the property. It doesn't take the width of the median, um, like y'all said, you can change that uh, from the center of the median separating the main traveled ways of a dividing highway. That would give them a little more footage.
I'm fine with the edge of the median, I just feel like we need to add something that addresses when the median changes width within one parcel.
Right, cause it had, some parcels could have multiple turn lanes, and then like I said, on the eastbound or the westbound lane.
We'd have dual lanes, dual turn lanes.
So you'd say like whichever distance is less or, yeah, I guess, I don't, I don't know.
Is with the seven hundred and fifty foot line back, would it, would it jog? Every time there's a turn lane, it would come in and
It would be a mess.
If, if you, if you change that from the edge of the median, change it to the edge of the scent of the middle travel lane. In other words, if you, you've got two travel lanes, uh, interior travel lane, then it's consistent all the way through. You, you don't, you, you go through the turn lane and measure, you don't measure from the edge of it and then you measure it from the
Right.
They're talking about going from the central line of the road on each side?
No, like
No, no, go from the edge of the through lane rather than the edge of the median. In, in other, in other words, you got two lanes eastbound.
So it was, in other words, if there was a turn lane, you wouldn't, you would not
You'd use the section that doesn't include the turn lane, just continue it through the turn lane. That way it'd be a straight line.
It would be a straight line.
And it would give us the least amount of distance. Yeah, that sounds good, but how do you, how do you say that?
That would, that way it would be more consistent.
We need to change some wording for that, to think with that. And I just see a few things on VDOT about that. They were going about, you know, the yellow line, a solid white line and, um, and different so I can kinda go back and revisit it a little bit if you like.
Well, it does sort of say that, Mr. President, cause it says separating the main traveled ways, it doesn't say including the turn lanes, so the main travel lane, same go from the Yeah, that sounds, now that we think about it more.
We might be okay.
Yeah, might be okay, cause it doesn't include the turn lane, it says separating the main travel lane, so if there's two east, two west, you're taking the center of the edge of the median, which would be
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, should we revisit the definition or is it?
No, honestly, now, now that you bring that, I think it, I think it covers that.
Yeah.
Could even, if you're gonna add anything, you can just add in something right after where it says main traveled ways, put parentheses, not to include
Turn lanes, yeah. That would, I think that's, that's, that's good, yeah.
And we can, of course, and provide some diagrams as well, uh, that will help with it.
Yeah. Yeah. Little illustration. Okay, sounds good.
Okay, and another thing y'all had asked for, um, is H R S D surface area map? So I did include those, I mean, it's not anything we have to, to do um, tonight with, but I just provided those for you.
That was the which maps?
The H R S D surface area map, yeah.
I thought you said the storm sewer map, sanitary sewer map, yeah.
These are for, for H R S D surface area.
Do those match our future water line?
Hmm, a little bit different. Do you want the water map line map?
I think we need the water map line because I was talking to Steve Pudgeins the other day and that, he said that the water tower will provide additional pressure on the east end, which will cover more area.
I'll get those for you.
Do we wanna include it on the same map so that we can maybe see a different color, that way we'd see whatever the same location is? Yeah, that might be good.
Often I can do.
The computers.
No, no promises, but I'll see what I can do. Okay, so we went over, um, the minor subdivision, the additional wording. Uh, was that okay with everyone?
I still I'm still a toast, but whatever.
Okay, and then under, um, the short term, we discussed um, the short-term business rentals, where it was permitted by Wright and A C, um, to use a B U P for that as well. So they would be required to have a B U P for A C R R N R one. Would that, that work for everyone? All right, and then the next thing, um, I was asked to look at was our noise ordinance. So I included that in your packet of what we currently have. And it looks like it does, um, we have it in several sections of the ordinance, so, um, under article two for noise, um, the intent, it should be unlawful for any person to make, continue or cause to be made or continued any loud, unreasonable, unusual noise or any noise which disturbs, injures or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace or safety of others within the county. Um, and then it goes into what these noises could be in it. Um, under thirty dash thirty-three, and it talks about operating or permitting to be played, used or operated, whether or not upon or attached to a motor vehicle on any street of the county, radio, television, musical instruments, phonograph bell, whistle, speakers, amplifier, other machinery device for producing or reproducing the sound in such manner as to disturb, disturb the peace. Um, it goes on to talk about the operations between twelve midnight and seven A M. Um, in such a manner that it be plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet from the building structure or vehicle located. Um, it does have exceptions for like festivals and bore-strewn machinery, equipment tools, um, customarily uh, operations of farm equipment, they're exempt.
Uh, I have a question. Is there any penalty?
Uh, it should be a class, oh, one misdemeanor. And that's currently in all ordinance.
And the other question I have, and what normally, what too often happens is somebody will, will call the police, report a loud noise, uh, disturbing noise, the police will go after it to investigate, by the time they get there, the noise is gone, uh. Is there any way that can be handled?
Um.
I don't, I really don't see how it could be, but.
It, it is hard to enforce, I mean, uh, you know, it's, I'm sure that the, the deputies that go out there, they have to actually see it. A lot of times, they probably ask them to, uh, turn the noise down, and if they do, that's probably the end of it. Uh, I know in other cases where neighbors are personally, uh, they would have to go to court and, you know, testify to that.
So they, they could possibly go to court and the neighbors could testify against it and, and that way, rather than somebody uh, in authority actually coming out and experiencing.
And it is also under seventy-four dash seventy-six unnecessary noise and it kind of goes through a lot of the same, um, same information, but most of it's, uh, for motor vehicles. Uh, we also have another section, we have some animals in dash ninety-six. And that's something that animal control would, um, take care of. I did also, um, include a definition. I don't really think it's necessary with what we have. Uh, any sound or any recording thereof amplified or increased by any electrical, mechanical or other device to such volume, intensity or carrying power as to unreasonably interfere with or disturb the peace of quiet of other persons of normal sensibility within the area.
Does that, does that meet the requirements of the state code?
It does, um, but with what we already have, I feel like it's, it's covered under that and we do reference um, the code of Virginia in here under motor vehicle, so. But if we want to include that, we can, we can certainly put it in. Uh, most of the noise ordinance is not in the zoning section, it's in other sections of the code. I also, um, included some, some other localities that are fairly close by with what they do. Um, just to kinda take a look at what they've got. And I did find a sound level chart. Uh, it's not from Virginia, but it, it did have a lot of good information about how many, um, decimals, different things caused. Uh, that's something, we, we don't have a decimal reader to, to go out there, but this gives you a general idea of how many decimals, different noises will, will cause.
Do you think we should include it, or is this just for our?
It's just, uh, I thought it was some good information, so I included. I mean, most, I, I know I didn't know how many decimals, different things were, so it kinda gives you a chart of, and some idea.
Normal daily operations.
It, it was a little surprising. Um, but, um, you know, just let me know if you wanna make some changes, we'll look at that and see about making some changes, but like I said, a lot of this isn't in the zoning ordinance, so. But it does look like it covered.
I think what you got in there in time of day, uh, where in, in our ordinance, we have after ten o'clock and after Whatever time on weekends, so so I think that that helps.
Graham, have you have you seen any issues where we need to address something in the ordinance when it comes to noise?
It was just something that was brought up um to to look at, um, so that's why it was included tonight.
The the biggest complaint I hear, believe it or not, is is the early morning seven o'clock backup beepers on heavy equipment. I mean, because they are, that is, that is a piercing.
I thought it was gonna be the rumble strips.
That would be named.
Or the roosters for those chicken people that are, and those neighbors that have all those chickens.
And we've got the complaining about the kennels.
Oh, right.
The dog was sparking.
Well, we do have something on that under the animal ordinance there.
That's okay with them.
The only thing that I just wanna, I don't know that it's even an observation, but I do know this through um. The different sections that are timeframes differ somewhat.
Thank you.
You know, in one section you've got um twelve midnight to seven A M, and then you've got a section that says. It's a ten P M or nine P M to, yeah, so I, you know, I don't know that we need to change them to match, but. Uh, I don't know whether that gets confusing for people, nine to seven versus the night seven, et cetera.
It would be better if they were all, you know, uniform. I I think it would be, especially anybody that has a fourth.
Find a happy medium between the two um. Amongst the different sections, but that that was my, that was just an observation um that I paid attention to. I I don't know whether it needs to be changed or not, but I just thought I'd point that out.
So our next thing is the P U D. Um, we wanted to um, we just said that and we also wanted to talk about density. I should uh put the credit for the new definition for playing unit development. This means a form of development characterized by unified light design for a variety of housing types and densities, clustering of buildings. Common open space and a mix of building types and land uses. And in which project planning and density calculations are performed for the entire development rather than on an individual lot basis. Um, so we should have the current um P U D ordinance, but I also. Included a couple of other localities um for us to take a look at. I know a couple of things that uh we were talking about is. Um, the density, uh, the open space. Uh, the type of buildings, which we do have the architectural standards for commercial structures.
For the uh Simon's track uh PUD, had, did we ever get an actual um number from them or one? Um, how much of the, how much actual open space there is?
We do. Um, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I remember looking at it and, you know, trying to think that it didn't appear to be enough, but they said that, I remember them saying that they would. Get us a figure.
We we do have that information. Um, I can certainly bring it back for you.
It was, it was part of the requirements, so you're understanding, right?
I know there was a couple of things that you asked us to to provide. Uh, which we did. Uh. We wanted to take a look at um maybe some of the proppers and other things that we had. Um. Just maybe to get some of the wording of. What we had required in the past, so I did include one that does have um. Like the type of um siding and and that type of thing that they have to provide.
Proposed PUD changes, does that change your recommendation?
No, that is just um something that I wanted us to to take a look at. Also, we we briefly talked about it. I know a couple of things that you you've mentioned was density. Um, and of course, arch- architectural. And the open space, which I highlighted those in our ordinance. But I know that's something that y'all want to to visit and and to look at. Um, these are proposals. Uh, they did come from some uh some of our local uh. Adjacent neighbors here of of what they're using, so I include that under some proposed changes.
So I was confused when you get to the section, I'm starting at page sixty-three for proposed PUD um changes. The next three, I want to. Well, front and back, it's three pages, and then the following three look to be the same, whereas did I miss that there were some differences between?
Nope, I think that's very young.
I I was hoping, because I was like, okay, I've I've stayed up late reading some of this. I'm like, did I miss something between those? Okay.
No, I think it's the same.
Yeah, just.
We just made too many copies.
That, that's quite all right. Um. Uh, thank you for including the other counties. Did you find anything in either of those other counties that you really think would be beneficial for us to include or incorporate? Into ours?
Well, I know density was a big thing for everybody. Um. And we, and we do have density included to a degree. Um. I know the tree canopy and open space, we could get a little more detailed into what were required there. I know with this one that's proposed, they have fifty percent of the required open space must be configured for usable recreation. Usable recreation open space or common areas shall not include areas devoted to vehicular streets. Any land which has been or has is to be conveyed to a public agency. Dan Eastman to a purchase agreement unless the property is to be conveyed will be used exclusively for recreational purposes. Land which constitutes wetlands, defined under the Code of Virginia as amended. Lands emerged under non tidal waters up to the normal watermark. Or land that would otherwise be undeveloped. And a minimum of twenty percent tree canopy coverage shall be provided for each section um of the development. I mean, I know that's one thing we're looking at is the building, but I'm under the design guidelines. They talked about the building design. The thought treatment, the desperation orientation and street connectivity, the street states. Um.
So basically, your proposed PUD changes are what you gleaned from the other counties that you thought would be. Uh, good for us to include.
Yeah.
And I did notice that you also put um. The three-story maximum um as far as the multi-pointing block units.
And of course, we have the others to to take a look at. Um. And and I think we have a good ordinance, but we may want to. Address it a little bit more, especially under the design standard.
The issues I was confused with were. When, when do we approve the rezoning? Isn't. In my mind, it was not clear in the ordinance that we've got, and I think we needed some more clarification on that. Because what that, what that basically says is that. The. They're going, they have to have. All of this information for the master plan before we go in and change yours. The way I read.
Now, just looking at some of the others that they have, and that might be something that you want to take a look at. Um. Um, I would under.
I think New Kent was fairly clear on a lot of that, although they don't get to the. They mentioned in their, the rezoning until later, but basically what they're saying is the rezoning shall follow the. Rezoning of the normal rezoning requirements.
And I have New Kent on here, but um. We'll just pass on here on applications for planned unit development. The planning commission board supervisor self-proceed in general as provided for other maps and then notes the planning commission may recommend. And the board of supervisors can apply the application according to the planned unit development and general regulations. May into the specific modifications of of planned unit development or general regulations. Or may deny the application. And this is approval of the planned development shall be by ordinance and shall contain all the specific requirements and modifications of general zoning provisions that are to apply. To the planned development. Um. Some of the extra modifications, approval type plans, and subdivision sites to be based on compliance with site plan or subdivision regulations. Applying at the time the land was designated as a planned unit development district. Or as the option of the applicant, the client's such regulation is currently in effect. Provided the board supervisors shall find that obligation of current regulations to satisfy the purpose. To at least an equivalent degree in a, in the particular case. This is, that's New Kent. Um, and Wright is a little bit different. Because they do talk about general provisions, and they talk about the master plan terms and provisions. So they get a little bit more detailed of what they want. And they have general development standards. And they even have some density on the table.
I uh, I do um particularly like New Kent's. Um, I guess it's letters F through K. G through K. Uh, they have several points in here. As it relates to the application process, including the pre-conferences and so forth. Um, where any proposed changes are. Are done in writing and and it's recorded, and I guess pretty much similar to a normal meeting would be for us. I like having that. Uh, we certainly didn't have. Those types of opportunities during the the one we we previously approved, so. Um, I'd like to see some wording from here on in our ordinance. Um. It would give us, it would allow us, I think, to. Um, to address some of the concerns we've had, like the minimum square foot for the housing, the 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 quality um of housing that would be going in. Um, give those types of things, give us a little bit more uh ability to. To to kind of be proactive, I guess, and not be surprised, you know, when we see the the plan submitted.
So let me do a little walk off of this ordinance and try to make it work for our ordinance. And bring that to you all at our next meeting. Uh, if that works and and see what y'all think.
That that's where you were getting it too, right?
Yes, yes. When. When we did the traditional neighborhood development and when that was approved, with V D O T uh. Provided a grant, we went through that with a consultant, and that was approved by the planning commi- recommended by the planning commission and approved by the board. They, gist of that was having internal. Commercial development. And the reason for that, and the reason V D O T was so interested in it, was with that internal development. You'll eliminate a lot of the trips on the main roads, like three sixty, and. That might have helped here, although. As as far as a um. Mixed-use development, I I I think. We have accomplished or will have accomplished one of the main things we were looking for, and that's commercial development. And if we get the kind of commercial development we're hoping for out of the consultant and out of the developer, then I think that will be a big help, but. And then, well, and. In this case. You will have access from the neighborhood to commercial development, so that that will help, but uh, I don't know in V D O T uh. Or when the consultant did their studies and V D O T looked at it, I don't know whether they looked at the internal. Traffic uh to how the, how the interim traffic would react between the houses and the children's center. And the reduction in traffic due to the walking community.
So what I will do is I'll uh, I'll make the changes that we talked about tonight. Um, and work on that P U D a little bit and and change some of the wording and get that to you all. Uh, and if you're in agreement. Um, after we um. Address some of the things that we need to address that we have on this list and and make these changes and y'all are in agreement. I think we need to uh set up a work session uh with the board supervisors. Um, and tweak this a little bit and then maybe take what we have. Um, and do a public hearing. I think it's better, but we're starting to get quite a bit now, and we don't want to have too much. Um, we we've gone that route before, and we don't want to go that route again, so. I think once we address these few changes and the other couple of things that we have on the list. Um, if y'all are in agreement to it after we get this like we want it, um, I'll get with Chris about setting up a work session.
I did note, by the way, in the tidewater review, there was an article in there about the of mixed-use development in New Kent town. And that's, in that development, they're looking at their traditional neighborhood development style.
Where, where are we at with their first P U D in the county? I know this stuff, corn has been planted, so I'm assuming nothing's going to be done prior to August.
Uh, probably not. They haven't. They haven't submitted anything to us yet. Um, when they do, I will make sure that everybody gets the copy, but they haven't brought anything in yet.
And I know they're they're two separate projects, but they get linked together. What about the the Wawa?
Um, they haven't submitted anything yet. I know they're working with V D O T right now.
Are we still waiting on approval from, for V D O T for approval of some of the traffic issues?
For the Wawa?
Well, for for access for Wawa as well as the issues on three sixty.
Uh, I think they are trying to get those ironed out with V D O T right now.
Heard the issues were with V D O T because the. Quantity of traffic that was anticipated for the Burger King is a lot less than what is going to be anticipated for the Wawa.
That's, that's going to be a lot of it.
Right.
But also on three sixty, I guess you noticed that. Uh, on the last thing they sent out, they gave an alternate design because of the distance signalization.
Right.
And the alternate design required, one of them required a U-turn and.
I don't like.
And on a, on a side note, I don't know if anyone travels that corridor, but the Wawa in Tappahannock. Stay, stays packed. I think they've got, uh, ten or eleven islands out there, and I've never been by there that every island did not have a car at it.
The first night someone drove off and broke one of the pipes off, so it flooded the first two bays with gas, so we had to shut it down, I'm like, oh no.
I don't know if we'll get the same, same design, but that is a good-looking building.
Yeah, it's pretty big, I don't think it'll fit on that.
Their, their design is pretty standard everywhere that they go, um, a little bit of their facade and the font, their pathway. It varies from brick to stone, but most of it is the same.
Well, one, one big positive for Tappahannock, they forced everyone else to drop their gas prices by about twenty-five.
Everybody else is less than Wawa now, so I'm like, what?
So maybe when we do get it here, that'll.
We hope.
Yeah, I think ours has been stuck three forty-nine, but six months. Is that on those or?
Unless there's anything else that you want to.
Any other, so any other questions, issues to bring up for her to look into or? Do you have a, like, tentative date when you might be there, you gotta get with us to see, but it's for, maybe for this month, an extra work session, or will it be?
Uh, I wanna get this to y'all.
First.
Um, let's iron out our, our little pickups with this. Uh, once y'all are in agreement to these, these items, uh, then I'll get with Chris and set up a date. So if I had to guess, I would probably say July.
Right, okay, this is just an idea, thank you very much.
Now we will circle back to Commissioner Collins, and I think I started with Molly last time, so I think we'll start this time. But this out, Mr. Keller. Um, I'd just like to say a couple of things that have kind of transpired in the last month, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, but the. The flow down here at the county is going a lot faster and a lot smoother, and. Uh, Mr. Ashcraft and Sherry and one of the E D A members and myself had a, had a meeting with one of the. Companies who's trying to locate here in the county, has actually played more pools down there, but. Uh, a, a fifteen-minute meeting. Ironed out a lot and moved us a lot further down the road than, than what we had been. And I just, I, I think Mr. Hart will agree with me that, that is something when we get these companies coming and looking. I mean, I just think it's just such a great thing to do, just to meet, breed and let them know that, hey, we, we want you here and we wanna help. Facilitate you coming here and help them cut through a lot of the red tape, I, I think we cut through probably weeks of red tape in that meeting. That, that otherwise would not have taken place, so that was, that was very productive, in my opinion.
Good. They've been sitting there for way too long, as well as the. What is that, the truck supply place there that's?
Abbott.
Abbott.
Yeah.
They just submitted a, um, revision, so.
Do we know what's happened?
They've been very slow, I know for a while there it was some wetland issues, um, that they had to get resolved, but. Uh, and the revision's not a big revision, so I don't think it's gonna take very long. Part of it's gonna be parking, I said it's gonna be drainage.
Drainage is what the Denver, about, about seven hundred fifty thousand miles of the site worth of it.
I did wanna bring up one thing, you, you sent out, uh, information on the. Downfall register that Mr. Ashcraft had probably been, and I'd, I'd looked at that and. Don't know it pretty clearly, and what that has given. Four, five tiers of development of site, site-ready projects, shovel-ready projects. Uh, I felt originally this is a project, but, uh. Since we do have, uh, after that, I mean, developing, hopefully funding in certain, I understand without some good. Offer for that, and I, I think that's something that. That person needs to handle anyway, and I think. Well, I think we've. Spun our wheels a lot on what we've, uh, rezoning, um, resist. I think a lot of good has come out of that, and that we. We terminated a lot of projects that are, are sorts that were not properly zoned and not presented that resides. All that is said, um, I agree with Mr. Keller, this, this office has set things up. Sometimes the mountain might, uh, be green, uh, like with the. Zoning, with the Simon's Drive that we were talking about, it just. Going for such a long time with that development, that the burning of the important. Discuss it and all of a sudden, it's on top of us, so I'm hoping that would be. That changes in the first, that we can dissolve a lot of that, and I think all of us, that was a learning thing for all of us, so I think that. Helped that, but, uh, I just. Thank this Brian said, but all of it has been done somehow, it's a big deal.
That, that's some good help. Very good help.
Mr. Sluder?
Yeah, um, certainly, uh, second, Mr. Keller and Mr. Wagner's comments, um, and I'll add to it as well, the, um, I, the. Article that, um, Mr. Wagner mentioned there, and, and then the other ones that we've been getting forwarded to us are, uh. I sometimes just don't have enough time to, to dig into what other areas across the state are doing. And I find it very, um, interesting, uh, what other, what other places, you know, are, are, are doing as far as their. Developments go and, and, and so I'm, you know, I just wanna say I'm very appreciative of, of those articles getting forwarded to us and, um. Yeah, I've been paying a lot of attention to how, uh, I know we mentioned before in our meetings about how, um. How information's getting out to the public and, and I know that for a while now, we've had the, um, you know, the headlines that come across the, um. You know, um, on like social media, Facebook, so forth, um, really liking those and also the, um. The administrator's blog that comes out that goes a little more into detail about certain things, I've caught a couple of those that just is get, getting, uh. Get a little bit more in-depth with what the county's working on, I think it's really helpful for people to be able to see those things and, and. It starts a dialogue that sometimes isn't always pretty, but, you know, it gets people talking, and I'm actually shocked that we don't have more people here tonight. Um, I know we didn't have much on the agenda, but just with all, everything going on and the conversations I've been seeing. I would have thought we would have had more people here tonight, but, um, it is what it is, but I'm sure that the next, uh. ATV or, yeah. I, I think that, uh, seeing those things out there, if I'm seeing them and other people are seeing, then, and hopefully we can kind of get ahead of people being, um. Yeah, blindsided by some of the developments that we know about, obviously, but, but not everybody else does, so. Um, once again, they can staff or put all this stuff, I mean, when we get a big stack, it's, it's not like it just appears before us, there's people saying it's gonna have to put it together, so. Thank you for, for your efforts.
So, pretty much everybody's covered everything, um, again, it's great to hear that the, you know, that things are getting faster and smoother. In a county, and especially with the. Department and all the staff, so, you know, that's, that's the really thing that I wanna, you know, key in on, is thank you so much for everything that you do. Um, we know, we, we ask a lot of you at each meeting to try to come back and bring information to us. Um, at the following meeting, and I know that takes time out of your day in addition to all your other responsibilities. I just want you to know how much we appreciate you doing that for us, um. I, I think we've made some good progress, I'm looking forward to us. Trying to finalize some of these things that we've been working on now for some time. Uh, to be able to get them to a meeting with the board to make sure that they are all on the same page that we are. Or if they're not, that we can go ahead and get those addressed quickly, um, so we can get that out to public here and even see what the public feels. So again, thanks to everybody, uh, that's, you know, helped us get this far. And of course, as always, thank you to all those who attend, wish there were more of you, but we're glad to see those who keep coming out every time, so.
And I did what everybody else says, that we have a good board, we have the good staff, like. Everyone said it doesn't just magically appear, and sometimes that pile is very thick to magically appear, so. That's a lot of work for everybody, I did wanna throw out, as we, Mr. Wagner did mention, we have had extensive interview. And then second interviews, and we have made an offer to an E D A person, we're waiting for response. Uh, we had simulations in some of our, um, interviews, met very well. So we're hoping that that person will accept and be on board very soon, and they were. Which is kind of strange, is what we have been talking about, they were interested in, in other counties and other areas that they had worked. Having sites ready and already rezoned because it takes so long for some companies to come in. And start from scratch, and like people have said in the past, they just get tired or fed up and then leave and go somewhere else, so. She's got, I hope is gonna be one of her, for, no, I can't say that, I'm not supposed to give hints at what the person is going to try and, uh. Look at sites, right, you don't know the names, so it doesn't matter, so, um, work on that to get sites ready and to. I hope even more streamline the process and maybe as Mr. Keller said, it has been a lot easier, a lot of things I'd been told in the past. Was it just takes so long and the red tape, stuff doesn't work right, the forms aren't quite right, some stuff's not online, some stuff is online, but. We still have a lot of stuff to work about, because admin system up here and there's still a lot of problems with commissioner revenue and treasurer's office, so some things still don't quite. Get the way they, they should fast enough, so hopefully we'll work on all that, and I said, hopefully we'll have somebody new, and I, oh, I had it up here. We also hired someone, and of course, my computer has gone down, it starts tomorrow. Who's the, who was it, the, the?
Name is Steve Wax.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Wagner's son.
It never had, uh, the facilities department take the rest of, we've only had a manager. And I think that will, uh, not only open the day-to-day, but with many of the projects you're talking about, you have Kelly. Uh, input, uh, that's necessary, the, the guys are project. It's, uh, the gentleman has experience in that area, so.
As always, thank, thank everybody for coming in the audience and online. I said, I was surprised too, I thought maybe at people like one of our meetings, we'd have people waiting outside and have to park in the back, but. That didn't happen, maybe they forgot that this was the first Tuesday of the month, but anyway, thanks everybody for coming, yeah. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, that was second, 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 a motion is made, probably seconded to adjourn, um, Ms. Barbara, could you call it please?
Mr. Sluder?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Ms. Height? Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood?
Hi, meeting is adjourned, thanks everybody.